Ready? Call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, approval of the agenda.
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Four, public forum. Five, presentation. Six, consent agenda. Do you have any questions? Anybody? Have anything?
I think so. I didn't have any questions.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Seven, financials. 7.1, review of budget year-to-date.
Okay, this is the first budget year-to-date for fiscal year '25. We're at 15%. Last year we were also at 15%, so that's a good thing. I didn't make any major errors. So if you look down on the very bottom, you'll see that object 461 is quite a bit over. We have the closing the achievement grant, which I didn't know about when we did the budget, so that will be amended in January. And there's also one for the more expensive object 510, which was for the porta-potties that we replaced. That's not in the budget, and I'll put the insurance proceeds in the budget at the same time. So that's why those two are look funny.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Jackie? 7.2, approved treasures report for August 31st, 2024.
Okay, we currently have $9.6 million in cash. I usually don't have much to say about this one.
Okay.
Get a motion to approve the treasures report.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. 7.3, approve 2023A bonds treasures report for August 31st, 2024.
Okay, we currently have $2.8 million in bond account.
So this would be the bond that we have designated for the roof.
Yep. When the track resurfaced.
Correct. Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve? So moved. Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. 7.4, approve regular bills for September. Everybody get a chance to take a look? See anything stood out? Get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. 7.5, approve high school activity bills for September. Again, everybody get a chance to look through them? Any questions? Comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. 7.6, approve 2023A bond bills.
I'll just comment. This was, uh, when I talked to Kraus Anderson, I think when they had to change with their personnel, there was a miscommunication with a bill that was left to pay on their part because we went back and tried to reconcile everything. And there was, because they had, I don't even remember his name, who was working with us first, and then he left.
Tyler.
Tyler, yes. And then he left and somebody else came in. So this was an outstanding bill that we still had with Kraus Anderson for their services that they had done. So this should be everything from what had been done before. And then we just have whatever's going on with the track and then the roof project going forward.
Any questions? Comments?
This is the last Kraus?
This should be the last Kraus Anderson, yes. Because the other one was the last TSB. This is the last Kraus Anderson.
Get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion passes. Number eight, board forum information. 8.1, board reports and updates. Do you have any committee meetings?
I haven't.
Not yet, but it's coming. We have some more policies that we need to attack and get after.
We have negotiations Wednesday.
Wednesday's negotiations with the ESP group. And then I anticipate that we will, given what I'll share a little later on in my superintendent report, a need for a finance subcommittee to meet and talk through the remainder of what's left to cover from the A-bonds to the anticipated expenditures that we'll have for the roof. So we'll need a finance subcommittee, but like I said, we can talk a little bit more about that during my report.
I've talked to a few different people in the community that are very happy that we are really cracking down on the cell phone policy. A lot of people have asked how it's going, and I said it was going good. And they thought that it was, you know, something that was needed before. And they said it's, they're very happy that we're doing that. And these are people that are having kids in school, you know, so.
Okay. Moving on. Number nine, administrators' report. 9.1, superintendent's board report.
All right, so a few things to report. First of all, enrollments 1102 right now, so that's good. I mean, we're a little better than we were last year. I think a couple of things I really wanted to spend some time highlighting in the report. You see a couple of attachments. One is a town hall meeting that's coming up. We're partners with others in the community talking about the need for childcare within the community. It's up on the screen right there, Tuesday, the 29th. So that's an opportunity out at the country club. There'll be some presentations about the needs in the community and then some possible solutions going forward. And like I said, I've been involved in several of those conversations and meetings just to keep talking about how we can all work together to find the childcare needs that exist in the community. So that's something. Another attachment that's available, and I didn't know, I had a suspicion that it was the same. I handed Brad an envelope tonight that had the, um, a report that came from the district in the 2022 Minnesota Student Survey. It seems like a long time ago, but I don't know if there was a previous report that was provided or not, but this was a report that was given. And Deb has it up on the screen. There are some really interesting things to acknowledge in this report. If you haven't read it, I would really encourage you to do so. This is some questions that were asked of our students and some things that, the prevalence of ACEs, which are adverse childhood experiences in the school district, and this is as reported by students. So I'm not going to get into the finite details of it, but again, I would really encourage you to because it does, I think, highlight some of the needs that we have to continue talking about within the school and within the community as a whole and how we can continue to work with other partners in the community as we work on some of these issues. We see some notes about domestic violence in the home, mental health issues in the home, some emotional abuse situations that all need attention. So we have some things, again, that we can talk about and keep working on. And I think it's an important conversation to have as a community, particularly as we go forward and we start talking about our new strategic plan and the profile of a graduate, which we've talked a little bit about before. So there's that. If you want a copy, again, I had Deb upload it, so you can review that. The roofing project, and this is where we're going to, I anticipate, have a finance subcommittee to talk about how we're going to proceed with the financing of the project. We have a pre-bid meeting on the 18th. Questions are due to Tremco by the 27th, and bids are due on October 4th. And we anticipate that bids will be awarded then at the October 28th meeting. And you can see the Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the projects completing now, or starting them. Phase 1 of June 1 of 2025, June 1 of '26 for Phase 2, with substantial completion September 1st of 2026. And that's to adhere to that hard timeline that we have to expend those bond funds that we have. And then as far as the financing goes, and I want to be very clear that I know I've had a couple of questions about, is this going to raise taxes for people? And the answer is no. Not that we're aware of, and that's under the understanding that we have today. And I qualify that all because there is some talk about changing the LTFM funding to include roofs at the state Capitol Building. And that's outside of our control. But what we control, what we influence, we asked Steve Pumper from PMA, I think you're all familiar with him. He's presented and worked with our district before. We asked about using bond funds, or excuse me, using existing reserves or cash balance. We talked about doing a lease levy because you can do lease levies where leased to purchase a roof. Or you can do a bond issue. And the bond issue would be leveraged against our LTFM funds that we receive. So it's not like we're bonding new on a tax base that's there. It's bonding against revenue that we already levy for through the LTFM funding. So it's not, again, a new tax. And we would extrapolate that out over a payment schedule of 10 to 15 years. And what is nice about that is if we use the bond funding through the LTFM funds, it's a good thing for our farmers because we get the Ag to School credit then for those LTFM funds that we bond against. So we found just a little handout that SOC Center Public Schools had about the Ag to School. So if there's any questions, that's 70%. I thought it was 50, but it's 70% credit, so that's a really good thing. But again, I think having the subcommittee for the finance subcommittee sit down with Steve Pumper, and then we sort through each of those options and determine what is best option for us going forward because I think then we can figure out how we're going to close the gap. There's no rush because we have Phase 1, the first year, which we obviously have the funding for. Phase 2, the second year, which is what we would need these other dollars for. But that would then complete the whole roof. As far as bidding the project goes, I've asked them to bid it out as a Project A, a Project B, and a Project C. Project A is Phase 1, Project B is Phase 2, and Project C is Phase 1 and 2 together. We might get the best deal that way because then a contractor knows for two years in a row they've got their crew locked up and they have a project that is guaranteed. So we'll see how that goes. Something that's pretty positive that we were asked to be partners in is the Office of Higher Ed partnership with direct admissions. It's a proactive admissions process for high school seniors. And it's just another way to make students aware of different opportunities for colleges. And it's not just four-year institutions, but other colleges, two-year colleges as well in the state. So you see a little information there. Homecoming week was phenomenal, capped off by an awesome win. And certainly, we had a lot of positive feedback about the week. I know there was some discussion and chatter about the message of try to curtail the toilet papering that was going on. And I think that was successful. It was down significantly. And I know I can speak on behalf of the staff members that I spoke to. They really appreciate that fact, that it was a positive thing because oftentimes, they're the targets for this type of action. And I know I've heard from many staff members saying, "Thank you, and we appreciate that." A couple other things to highlight. We're still going through some buildings and grounds issues, some challenges with air. As you can tell, this room's really cold. Some rooms are warm. There've been some issues with air handlers not working the way they're supposed to. As you can see in my report, we had a former employee that had installed some valves backwards in our system, restricting the system flow as it was supposed to. So we got those issues fixed. So again, we're getting this all sorted out and continuing to talk to the service cooperative partners that we have to continue to test and balance the building because, as I understand, the temperatures haven't been right since the two buildings came together, and it's something we're still working on. School board conference is coming up soon, so if you're interested in attending, please reach out and let Deb know. And I just wanted to give a close out with a little update on the solar project that the board approved earlier. I've continued to keep in contact with Sioux Valley Energy. And the latest that I have is there's a public meeting scheduled for October 2nd that Sioux Valley Energy will plan to attend on behalf of the district regarding the city ordinance for the solar systems that people are talking about installing. And it's anticipated they will have that final reading of the ordinance on October 22nd. They're still anticipating that work will begin this fall, and it will be completely energized by the end of the school year. So still a pretty aggressive timeline, obviously, but they're assuring us that we can get that done. Yes, the last thing I would highlight is we are required by law to have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. So if you're aware of potential parents that would be interested in serving on such a committee, please direct them my way or direction to Lisa Pease because we want to get that process going. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Clint? All right. Moving on. 9.2, principals' board report.
Okay, I'll start, and then Mrs. Pease is going to give Mrs. Morvitz's report since she's not here tonight. Mine is fairly short. I guess the biggest thing that we were all, apologies. The biggest thing that we were all concerned about was, is this stricter cell phone policy going to fly with our community, with our students, with our staff? And we are on the fourth week of school. I can tell you that I have done countless sweeps of classrooms just to let students know that I'm in there and I'm looking. And I have not seen a single student on a cell phone myself. I've had two cellphone infractions in the entire building, six through 12, in the last three weeks. And that would be students that pull their phone out and the teacher sends me to go retrieve the phone or the student brings it down themselves. And so I think students are really understanding that. I've had a few seniors even come to me and say, "This might be weird, but we are excited about the policy because we're not distracted by our phones and we spend more time actually visiting with each other," which I thought, I mean, it was two students out of all of the ones that I have, but I don't know that they necessarily mind and they're abiding by it. They're really good kids. They're really awesome kids. I'm really proud of how they did at homecoming. Last week was awesome. We had our student council plan, activities every day, dress-up days. Almost every single student participated in those, and they were pumped up, but not to the point. But just like Dr. Willett mentioned, they weren't distracted or hyper during class time. They had a certain time during the day, a certain period, where they would do an activity. And they got right back to their coursework after those activities and were very respectful. That's one of the things I really appreciate about the student body that we have here in Pipestone is that they really are like really good, good respectable kids. On a different note, our math and English language arts teachers were trained in administering NWEA MAP, which is our new system, coming off of FastBridge. This is going to just give us a much deeper, more relevant look at what our students know, what they don't know, what the trends are, and how we can inform our instruction in the classroom to meet the needs of our learners. So I'm really excited about that. Math is testing this week in the math classrooms. And English and reading are going to be tested next week. And then we've got a training coming up, October 9th, with the math gurus, and they're going to walk us through some of those reports. I've been spending a lot of time with our new teachers. I've actually been spending quite a bit of time in the classrooms, and they are so excited to be a part of this school. And that's sort of the energy that I'm getting from them. They're so excited. They feel supported. And again, they think the kids are amazing, which they are. We've had a really great start to the year. It's been incredible. It's gone really fast. Our sophomores are going to the Career Expo tomorrow in Marshall. And we just have a lot of awesome things happening in this district.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will share Mrs. Morvitz's report. She's, in her report, she says, "As we embark on another exciting school year, I'm excited to share the positive momentum and enthusiasm the start of the school year has been. The energy in our halls is awesome to see and feel. Students are eager to learn. It's been fun to see them reconnect with their friends and their teachers. Staff members have gone above and beyond to create welcoming classrooms. And there are a lot of great things happening at the elementary school. We've had 16 staff members trained in CPR through the American Heart Association. All staff in the elementary received Alice training on Wednesday, the 18th. And the middle school and high school staff will be getting training coming up in a couple of weeks. Ludoff buses came and provided bus safety training for the students in grades pre-K through 5. Again, with the NWEA MAP and DIBELS, those are our new assessments. The elementary has completed those. We started those a little bit earlier. Because of homecoming in the middle school, high school, we decided to hold off a little bit. And it was nice, since they're new platforms, to get a feel of it in the elementary and then move on into the middle school, high school. The outside custodial staff have done a superb job keeping the playground clean of the little rock pebbles. I know that the kids like to take the little pebbles and make piles and spread them all over. So I know that they've worked hard keeping that area clean of the pebbles. We had fun dress-up days during homecoming week, ended up with a parade and a pep fest. There will be a back-to-school bash on Wednesday, September 25th, with the Elementary Booster Club from 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock. And everyone is welcome to attend." She also says she would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to each board member for your support in approving the new Dean of Students position this year. Mr. Scott Stairwood has done an incredible job strengthening student support, creating a positive school culture, enhancing communication, addressing behavioral challenges, supporting our staff, and supporting my vision for the elementary school. Thank you for supporting a shared commitment to fostering positive and nurturing educational environment for all students. I know that the times that I am over in the elementary side of the building, he is constantly in the hallways helping with students. And I know that that has been a huge asset for the teachers and the students. And then her last point, "As I work with my team to strive to provide a holistic educational experience for our students, it is essential to recognize the significant role that social, emotional learning and mental health support play in student success. With our ever-growing needs at the elementary level, I continue to see a great need to have a school counselor. The implementation of a school counselor is not just an addition to our staff, it's an investment in the future of our students. By addressing their social, emotional, and academic needs, we can create a more nurturing and effective learning environment. I want the school board to be aware of the substantial social, emotional, and mental health needs at the elementary and ask the school board to seriously consider an additional position at elementary for a counselor. The benefits of having a dedicated school counselor will positively impact our students, staff, and community as a whole." And I can also speak to that today. I was over-meeting with Mrs. Morvitz, and she got called out several times. Mr. Stairwood was gone today. And I even went a couple of times into classrooms to help teachers. So there is definitely a need for a counselor as well just so that they can teach those social, emotional skills to the littles.
Yeah, I know. I've been approached in the community by a handful of teachers that are also thankful for that Scott's in that position. They're already seeing that it's positive, just the help.
And I guess I myself would like to see how that position, you know, we haven't really given that position a lot of time yet. So I'd like to see how that position helps some of our things that we have going on before we jump to putting another position on.
They've already had one.
And we're only four weeks into school. You know, I mean, we're already.
You gotta give it time.
Yeah.
I'm not saying no, but I agree.
Yeah. Well, and I think we need to look at counselors that we do have in place and what they could do to, you know, help in different areas.
Okay. Thanks for sharing that. Now, 9.3, curriculum teaching and learning board report.
Well, Mrs. Ortman and Mrs. Morvitz took some of my things, so mine will be okay. That's what happens when you're the last one. So we did get the assessment calendar updated to reflect the assessments that the students in our district will be taking. Deb does have it posted to our district website, so we are in compliance with the state of Minnesota there. As we've talked about, the new testing platforms with NWEA MAP and DIBELS, took a little while to get those platforms up and running, but it seems to be going pretty smoothly. I know that Nancy's going to be testing tomorrow morning, so she has me on speed dial if she needs me. DIBELS testing takes a little bit longer. It's one-to-one. It's grades K through 3, and then the at-risk students in grades 4 and 5. And as Mrs. Ortman said, the middle school, high school staff were trained. And so hopefully, it'll be a smooth process for them. Wednesday, early dismissal, professional development. We've completed the required bloodborne pathogens, seizure training. Like we said, we've done the Alice trainings. A new platform that we have for professional development is through the master teacher. So now we have, for the paraprofessionals, it's called the Paraeducator, which has online courses so that we can provide them with tools and their toolkit for when they're working with students and working with adults in the classrooms. And we also have a teacher e-learning bundle. The last couple of years in the elementary have been spent on letters training, so we needed another training module just to benefit the teachers as well. And we did receive the MCA student assessment reports from last spring. We received those about a week ago. Elementary has been sent out. I know that the middle school, high school ones, there are a lot more of those. And I know that they're working on getting those sent out as well. And in October, we'll have a report for you with MCA data.
We got Cass's today.
I was gonna say, I got some.
Did you get it? Okay, good. I know she's been working on them. She had like two boxes. I'm like, I'm so sorry. So good, I'm glad you got them.
Yep.
And then as Lisa shared, there'll be a little deeper data dive into the MCA data that we'll share with the board because there's a data retreat that will be going to with the Service Cooperative, correct?
Yes, with a new, with viewpoint, actually, yes.
One question that came to mind. Is there any, on the letters training, is there any refreshers or is there any continuing? You know, that once they finish, is there any like to keep them?
So with Mrs. Morvitz and I, we're working together. She has a literacy team that she meets, that we're going to meet with once a month She has a literacy team that she meets, that we're gonna meet with once a month and work on incorporating all of the skills and everything that we've learned through the letters training. And so it's gonna be ongoing throughout the school year.
Okay, you know, 'cause positive was, I mean, the feedback was very positive.
Mm-hmm.
And I just hate for it to slowly fizzle. Well, and that's, that's an opportunity, if I may, to, we have to establish an MOU with the, with the teaching staff for some funding that we'll receive for letters training. And some of that, as I understand right now, there's a little discussion about, does that have to be all expended, or can some be held back in anticipation of new staff coming on board? Because we do have to have a training mechanism in place for new staff, either new graduates or individuals coming from a different state that need to have this training. So we'll have to work through that. And then speaking of MOUs, you saw earlier that there was an MOU item that was removed from the agenda. Just real quickly, it's an MOU that I've been working with the association on, because we've had some situations, particularly in like the physical education classes, where they have like three classes working at the same time, a couple of teachers may be gone, and rather than hiring a sub, one teacher will kind of monitor and manage it all. Well, the way the new contract ended up last time when we negotiated, that person wouldn't qualify to be compensated for the extra supervision. And this MOU would address that, so watch for that to come forward. Again, we'll probably look at that as a negotiations committee before we make that official action. But again, that's, that's something that we've been working on, because we need to take care of the people that are willing to do that extra supervision. And if we don't have to hire a sub, which oftentimes is very difficult to hire a sub, it makes sense to do that, so. And that's just a couple of other things I forgot to mention.
Any other questions for Lisa? Thank you. Number ten, discussion items. Ten point one, first reading of the 2024-2025 Teacher Seniority List. Ten point two, the first reading of the 2024-2025 Parry Seniority List. Ten point three, the first reading of the 2024-2025 Secretary, Custodian, AP and Tech Seniority List. And ten point four, the first reading of Policy 620, Credit for Learning. If you wanna share anything on these, there's no action needed, just 'cause they are the first, it is the first reading.
I'll just highlight a couple of things. Our seniority lists look significantly different this year than they have in the past. And that's because previously, we had it broke out in, in these unique categories, and it, it ended up being a bit confusing. I think that's the safest way to say it. And a seniority list, through the negotiation process with the teachers this last time, which is first, first hired starts at the top and goes on down the list. So that's how we have it organized now. Much cleaner, much easier to read, and it makes sense, because there is always the flexibility for out-of-field placements and different tiered licensure options. So again, that's why you see the seniority list, particularly with the teachers organized the way that it is this year versus what you may have noted or observed in, in previous years. The other seniority list is consistent with the respective master agreements that we have those in place so that we can, if there were ever a, a reduction in forced practice, which I don't anticipate, they're, they're for reference. So that's why we have the seniority list in the first place. And the Credit for Learning policy, again, it's just a pretty straightforward piece as we talk about how we recognize what's going on for credit and the reference to accredited schools, because we are seeing pop-ups of different situations where they're not accredited or online courses, those types of things. So again, it just takes care of a lot of that work there, a pretty simple policy, so those will be featured.
Within that Credit for Learning policy, it talks about giving credit to students who work or do an internship at a medical facility or something very similar. I know during our policy meeting, I believe it was, we had talked about, is there the ability to do that with other internships or other types of jobs out there? Do we, do you make me looking into as far as what?
I've asked a couple of questions, and I don't have an answer yet, and I think it comes down to, is it allowed because it's permitted by state statute and it needs explicitly be stated that way? So that's the question that I posed, is, does it have to explicitly stay in state statute that it can be, because this one is? Or do we have the capability to expand on some of the things that we're doing, like with the CEO program? Because Mrs. Ortman and I have talked about that, with students who may qualify for early graduation, for example, I would much rather have them take a PSEO course and participate in a field-based internship experience that helps them determine if that career path that they're thinking is really what they want to do or not. So we pose the questions, don't have the answer yet. To the point, though, the, the medical piece has been explicitly stated by state statute.
Minnesota has noticed there's a shortage of employees in that field.
Yes, yes. Let's, let's get them going.
Seize the day.
Again, this was first reading of all these, so we'll see them again next month.
Any other questions? All right. Eleven, Board Action. Eleven point one, FFA National Convention Request.
Technology and me don't get along, so I don't always know if stuff is on when I start talking. So I'm Maddie Rush, I'm one of our FFA advisors here at Pipestone. I focus on a high school, and our other advisor, Maddie Bimber, focuses mainly on our junior high students. In the spring last year, we had the amazing opportunity to have our livestock evaluation team win the state competition. We also had the highest individual as well, which is very exciting news, which means they qualify for our National FFA contest. Based on where the state convention is in April, this would be finishing up last year's FFA team, so they would compete at the end of October, beginning of November timeframe. So we have four students that are going. Our coach, which is Brandi Schatz from the 4-H office as well, she coaches our livestock judging team. And then Maddie Bimber would go with them as their coach here at the school building. They're gone from Tuesday, October twenty-second, they leave at six or six-thirty in the morning, bright and early, to drive down to Indianapolis, Indiana, where they will participate in the national convention contest. They judge from about seven forty-five until about three forty-five in the afternoon. It's a full day of experience for them, as well as being able to go to sessions and workshops and learn more, especially having a career fair that has colleges and careers from across the US there, an opportunity that they wouldn't get when they're here. So it's really cool to have that experience as well. They would arrive back early Sunday morning, Saturday morning, on October twenty-sixth as well. I'm asking for permission to go on this overnight trip and have the school district pay for our substitute teacher and our transportation costs of the competing team. FFA, the Egg Chamber, and the Minnesota Livestock Brewers Association would be paying for the rest of the expenses. Every year, the Livestock Brewers Association gives the winning team eight hundred dollars to go to national convention, as they're there saying, "Thank you and continue in our career path." So we're gonna utilize those funds to help get the kids there and have them have less of expense on themselves to get there and pay for their food and things like that. So, yeah. Any questions?
No.
And who was that high individual again?
We're debates, it was our high individual.
Don't want this an opportunity for foul mom.
But we did have all, we had five students, five students competed at region, we had to take the top four, so it was unfortunate, but we had all of our five kids were in the top ten, and we still had to cut one of our students to go. So we were able to bring them along anyway, 'cause they were winning their state degree, so that was good, they gotta go to state convention. And then the kids that did extremely well at the state contest, top fifteen, I believe, is what they were in, so then we only had the top three scores counted, so the kids did exceptionally well, and we're very proud of them, so.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Can I, I, I say it, prove it.
Absolutely.
Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion? Second.
Do I need to like spit it out?
No, but I think you should say what, what you're, what you're moving.
I am interested to approve that we...
The district cost?
Yeah, the district cost for the National FFA Convention for the livestock judging team.
Is that all we're approving? We're approving that they get to go?
And the overnight busy.
We're reporting.
We're approving the trip and the, and the cost, yeah.
Wonderful. Awesome.
So I have a motion. A second? Yep, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes.
Awesome, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Eleven point two, Resolution Accepting Donations. So Pipestone Publishing Company donated fourteen hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Athletic Help Fund. Arrow Booster Club donated ninety-one hundred, ninety-six dollars and eighteen cents for a Fisher Hedgehog Tackling Dummy, tackling rings, another tackling ring, summer acceleration camp, two tennis ball court, mowers, Garmin portable golf launcher, two of them, individual spike trainer for volleyball, and volleyball catchit. And then Pipestone donated four thousand dollars for overdue lunch balances. And I'd like to thank all of them for these very generous donations.
What is the, what is the balance of our, of the overdue lunch balances?
I don't know what it is. Sixteen thousand?
That's from last year, correct?
Multiple years.
Oh, it keeps getting carried.
So how does that work? How does that, how does that four thousand get allocated?
That we need to work out with the talker, I'm gonna determine that. Go ahead, Jack. Well, or maybe it's already been discussed.
I don't make that decision often. I think last time, we received a donation, the administrative team, not to release that dump and look at the deaths of the students and maybe determine who's gonna do it right now, who's gonna receive it.
Not to our family, why is it?
Considering some of the personal circumstances.
I wasn't involved with it, but that's what, that's what's up. People sat down with the teammate of the college, and I don't know who was up off, but they determined.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's what happened, right? And then I just have to make sure all the reason why food service is not already right off. We have poured off food service accounts before when Mr. Anderson was here, and just because they were high, we were...
I was gonna say, I thought we've done that before, just because we have such an amount.
It'd just be a lot higher than that.
Yeah. Well, we have quite an amount in that food service account.
But, but right you...
You can't use that?
Right off food service count, they throw it off against the general fund.
Oh, gotcha.
So you can't, yeah, I won't have, I won't take my opinion on that.
Well, that is dumb, yeah, I would agree, but... Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve these donations?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. Eleven point three, Approved Policy 613 Graduation Requirements.
This is not the first time you've seen this policy. It's, it's a policy that went from a policy committee and then obviously was vetted through the administrative team, and now we're at the final reading and approval of it. It clarifies for everybody how we're counting credits and what the credit requirements are when you look at page two. It clearly explicitly states four credits of language arts, three credits of mathematics, three credits of science, three and one-half credits of social studies, and lays out all those expectations then. And then you'll notice one credit of art credits for physical education, and then seven elective credits. So we also know that, as you see in the notation of the policy, there's changes forthcoming on government citizenship requirements in twenty-five and twenty-six. So I think this covers all the things that we need to with the anticipated changes coming as a result of some statutory action by the, by the legislature. So it, it addresses the concerns that we had early on with the change in the seven-period day from the block schedule, how do we count credits? This is very explicit, very clear, and lays that all out, so.
To me, it's much more clearer than was before. I'm overly approve of Policy 613.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. Eleven point four, Second Reading of Policies 403, Discipline, Suspension, and Dismissal of a Student, of a School District Employee. 504, Student Dress and Appearance. 522, Title, Non-Descrition Policy, Grievance, Procedure, and Process. 606.5, Library Materials. 606.5, Form. 616, School District System Accountability.
Again, these are not new for the board to have reviewed. You had a first reading, this is the second reading of those. These are some pretty significant policies, as we discussed previously, particularly when we look at the Title IX. And I know that there are still some things that are potentially up in the air with Title IX, and some of that is, may be influenced or impacted by the upcoming presidential election, because again, this is one of those things that has been talked about. So this one could be subject to change. You can see as well, the library policy, I know there's been a lot of discussion across the country about library materials and whatnot. This lays out just processes and procedures that are in place relative to consideration of library materials. So again, just lays out some of those processes that, that will be in place. Student Dress and Appearance, we've talked about that. That was implemented in anticipation of this policy into the student handbooks, really trying to adhere to, we don't want a dress to be distracted, distracting or inappropriate. We want it to be modest and, and something that is appropriate to wear in school for weather, and, and also avoiding any communication or anything that isn't appropriate on, on, on garments. So again, some pretty significant policies, not new, you've seen them before, and again, just recommending that we keep moving forward with them. And I think we've done a pretty good job with dress policy as well this year. I know I'm putting together my monthly communication with staff, and this is one of the things I'm hitting on, is just, is continue to buckle down on that with the modest dress, appropriate dress, and, and adhering to those expectations that we have.
I know when Cassie leaves in the morning, I make her raise. Well, I'm hard pushing the button.
You make her put her fingers down. It's definitely better, it's better than last year. We still have more crop house, I mean, that'll slip out. It just takes a simple conversation with the student, and they happen to change, it's completely, it's not a big deal.
Good. Get a motion to approve these policies? Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. Eleven point five, Declare Desks, Chairs Obsolete.
Well, you can see the picture that was provided regarding these desk systems, and they, this is one that's in good condition. We are, we are wanting to declare these obsolete, and we have to build into our capital projects budget next year some serious replacement for desks and chairs, 'cause it's becoming very problematic. You see, the, the high school staff in particular, and on their heads, yes, because it's, it's, it's unfortunate, some of these chairs, you just, you sit on them and a piece will snap off and break. I may or may not have experienced that. So it's, it's just one of those things that, that, it's, it's unfortunate, but things are just wearing out. I mean, these are some old units, and it's time that we find something different, and so that's why we're declaring these obsolete, to get them cleared out and start making new room for some different ones next year.
Any discussion? Questions? Can I get a motion to declare these obsolete?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion passes. Eleven point six, Certified Proposed Levy Limitation and Certification Report for 2024. Eleven point six, certify proposed levy limitation and certification report for 2024 payable 2025. Set truth and taxation meeting December 16th, 2024, 7:00 PM.
All right, I'll make a couple of comments, and we'll be willing to defer some to Jackie as well because we attended recently together the levy workshop, and we, we had, it was very informational. We pored over this entire document. And we had training by the state, and we walked through how things are arrived at the way they are and what the difference tax rates are, whether it's referendum tax capacity, net tax capacity. I mean, there's, there's a lot of variables, obviously, that go into it. And if you're inclined to want to know, they gave us this nice little handout of where the numbers come from. So if you're looking for some bedside reading, I'd be happy to share my copy. Just return it because somebody else might want to. All kidding aside, this is something that the state works with local, with local districts on, and we recommend certifying to the max because there could still be changes in the levy. And again, by certifying to the max, it ensures that those changes, if they are occurring, that we're capturing those changes. So Jackie, anything you want to add or say that's different or otherwise?
I just saw, it's very interesting. You guys may not find it interesting, but on page one of the actual levy, on that page right there, if you look at line four, the 2022 market value compared to line five, that's how much our market value has gone up in Pipestone County.
It's a 32% increase, $741 million.
Yeah. So, and then if you go down below, see that referendum market value? That, that excludes ag land. So if you compare line five to line 10, that's how much ag land is in this county. So if you look at the 500, I can't even read these numbers, so they're $3 billion, $75,000. Now, if you take out ag land, you're down to the, we have on line 10.
And then what's interesting with all those numbers changing, as our local valuation goes up, the amount of state aid that we receive goes down.
And that's why there's a lot of those increases, because the state has set a limit based on how wealthy your district is. Well, when the market value has gone that high, and our student count really hasn't increased, that increased your market value per student. So you're getting less aid because they say you're a wealthier district, and that's why a lot of those like operating capital on there has gone up. That's because last year we received some aid. This year we didn't, and the state has not, even though, correct me if I'm wrong, even though the market value has gone up pretty much in the whole state of Minnesota, the state has not, has not increased the line where they determine how much is equity, how much is levy and how much is aid.
So that equity component is getting imbalanced.
So they, they not have inflation factor on the market value then?
Remember, this is all determined by politicians.
Right.
So, the way it's, the way it sounded when we went to this, they haven't caught up.
No.
I mean, she flat out said that. So.
Well, somebody recognizes it.
She does, but.
She does. She's the director, she's the director for the Department of Finance and.
And she will also say.
Yeah.
What I just said.
Yep.
As long as she's not being recorded.
And then as far as the truth and taxation meeting goes, that is a requirement set forth in state statute that we have, and we will start that meeting directly, so that the hearing itself, right at 7:00 then.
We don't have to do that anymore.
Anytime after 6:00. We just did that record.
I think they told us it's gonna start exactly at that time, but.
So we need to take action to set the state.
The state and time, yeah.
For this.
For the truth and taxation.
And to certify.
And to certify.
Levy at the max.
At the max.
I move that we set the truth and taxation meeting for December 16th, 2024, at 7:00 PM and certify to the max.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Both same sign, motion passes. Twelve, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. We're adjourned.